Welcome everyone. My name is Julie Burns and I'd like to welcome you on behalf of the League of Women Voters to this debate between candidates for the Rochester City Council. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan membership organization. We do not endorse candidates or parties. We work to build an informed and engaged public who will want to participate in government to make it work better. We believe that the candidate debates are an excellent source of information for voters in deciding who to vote for, and we salute the candidates who have taken the time to be here tonight. The League has invited all candidates for each office to participate. We can only have a debate if we have more than one candidate for the office in question. Tonight's debate will be recorded and published to the League's YouTube channel. Everyone who registered for the debate will receive a link of the recording. We urge everyone to share the link broadly. The rules for tonight's debate are as follows. Each candidate will be invited to give a one-minute introduction to themselves and why they are running. We'll go alphabetically by last name. We will then begin rounds of questions. The moderator will read the question. The first candidate will have a minute and a half to respond, and the other candidates will have one minute to respond. Candidates have been asked to focus on the issues and to not interrupt each other or ask each other questions. The moderator has the latitude to award time for rebuttal if they deem it necessary. We will begin with questions the League has already drawn up, but audience members are welcome to submit questions in the Q and A. We will ask as many questions as time allows. As time is drawing to a close, the moderator will call for a final round of statements from the candidates. Closing statements will be limited to two minutes for each candidate. Now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Wanda Wilson. Could you turn on your camera and get the debate started?
Good evening, everyone, and again, welcome to the candidate debate for the Rochester City Council. At this time, I'm going to ask that the candidates turn on their camera and the timekeeper. And tonight's candidates are Kelly Cheadle, Victor Sanchez, and Dave Sutliff Adias. Did I get that right? All right, and our timekeeper for tonight will be Karen Funk. So at this time, I'm just gonna ask if each candidate, starting with Kelly, then going to Victor, then going to Dave, if you would please give us a one-minute introduction of yourselves and tell us why you are running for the city council seat.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Cheadle. I'm an artist, a small business owner, a community organizer, and the mother of four incredible young adults. I currently serve as the legislative aide to Rochester City Council's East District. My work as an artist has taught me to think creatively, manage complex, multi-phase projects, and collaborate across cultures and communities to bring new ideas to life. It's also helped me to understand the importance of planning ahead, both for better outcomes and for long-term cost savings. As a community organizer, I've seen how important it is to center the voices of residents and to help people understand how local government works so that they can engage with it and hold it accountable. Over the past year, I've deepened that work by serving as legislative aide and supporting constituents and learning the inner workings of city council in preparation for stepping into the role. I'm running for council because I bring hands-on experience, creative problem-solving, and a deep commitment to people-first leadership. We are facing an uncertain future, and my ability to find solutions to novel challenges will be an asset. I believe our city works best when it's built by and for the people who live here.
Thank you. Next, Victor?
Yes, good evening, everyone. First, I want to start off by thanking the League of Women Voters for holding this forum, especially for city council race in a general election. Many people try to talk about this race as it being done in the primary, which it is not. We still need people to show up and vote in November, so it's really important that you're having this important forum, and I thank you for that. My name is Victor Sanchez, and I'm running for city council. I'm running because as a queer Mexican immigrant, I believe that visibility and representation matter in all levels of government. But more importantly, I'm running because I believe in the American dream. I believe that that dream can be held by everyone who lives in this great country. However, we all know that the structures and systems that have been put in place prevent many of us from achieving that dream, and it's really important for all of us to be able to support one another and change the systems and structures to be able to help everyone achieve whatever their dream and potential could be. As an engineer, I know what it means to work with systems. I know how to go in and understand the structures that are in place, and better yet, take them apart and put them back together to be more efficient and more effective. That's what I want to do in my role as city council, and I hope to have your support. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dave Sutliff Adias, and like Victor and Kelly, I'm running for one of five seats in Rochester City Council. I was born and raised in Rochester. I graduated from Franklin in 1984, and I'm also an educator. And so a lot of what I do, while on the surface may not look like it, but is focused on kids, and it's focused on the lives that they lead and the things that they have to deal with. And I feel that everything that's in my platform, pretty much top to bottom, will have an effect on kids and the things that they bring into the classroom on a daily basis. As a teacher, I've taught in both the City School District as well as in other districts as well, both suburban and rural, and in jails as well. I can tell you that the things that our kids are bringing into the classroom are things that teachers cannot deal with, the school board cannot deal with, or anybody in the district can deal with. We need to deal with things outside of what happens in the schools in order to help these kids and our city's future. And that's the main reason that I'm running, is I am proud of Rochester. We have a lot of potential here, but unless we do things in a different way, we will never realize that potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll be going to our first question, which we will start with Kelly, and then go to Victor again, and then we'll go to Dave. First question is, and you have, Kelly, you'll have a minute and a half, and then everyone else will have a minute. What do you view as the most important issue for the city council to address in the coming year, and how do you propose to address it?
So I think our biggest challenge, and it's a challenge that's not just unique to Rochester, is our housing crisis. We are facing a serious housing crisis. Over 63% of our residents are renters, and too many of us are living just one paycheck away from eviction or displacement. So we need to stabilize our housing by preserving and repairing what we have, by expanding affordable housing options, preventing private equity from taking over our single-family homes, and by giving tenants a real path to homeownership. Homeownership is the foundation, or housing is the foundation for stability, for safety, and opportunity, and we can't build a strong city without it. We also need to make sure that we are not causing harm. So that means we have to end the city's policies of homeless encampment sweeps, especially when there are not housing options available for people. Taking someone's tent who is living rough outside does not make them housed. It only makes them more homeless than they already were. I think the second major challenge that we face is that we're preparing for the growing impacts of climate change and economic uncertainty. So that means investing now in local food production, clean public power, and programs that strengthen our community connection and economic independence. So if we want a city where everybody can thrive and not just survive, we need to build resilience into everything we do, starting now.
Thank you, Kelly. Victor?
Thank you. I echo Kelly in the call-out for housing being one of the biggest crises that we need to tackle, and just add a little bit to what Kelly was saying. I'm excited to see that the city is exploring other opportunities for developing more affordable housing. However, I do worry that some of that housing, though it may be affordable to start, it's not going to be affordable in the long run. So one of the big things that I want to see done is increase the outreach of community land trust, which is going to help keep housing affordable long-term by keeping that land controlled by the community and those members of the land trust. So that's one of the things that I would push for, to expand the reach and make sure that we have those types of properties mixed in with some of the development that we see going up in other, more wealthier areas. We have a big opportunity coming up with the Inner Loop North, which I know a lot of the parcels are going to be sold off to developers, and I want to make sure that some of those parcels are kept sustainable long-term by incorporating those into land trust. Along with housing, we also have a huge issue with the unhoused population, and seeing models like having small shelters to protect those that are unhoused during the winter months is an important path, and we see some of those models coming up now in the city, and I want to expand on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, I guess I can echo as well my concern about housing, and if you've been following my campaign, either on my social media or at my website, dayforchange.org, you can see that I have a nine-point plan on housing. But one of the things that I talk to my students about almost every day, to the point where they're kind of tired of it, is that we tend to teach incorrectly in schools, and that most problems have one right answer, like on a Regents exam. Now, we don't do that completely, but really, the focus is still, there's a one-right answer. And to the premise of the question, what is the number-one problem? Yeah, I could pick either one of my, any of my things that are in my platform, and they're all really important. And to really reach our potential as a city and as a community, then we can't just have one focus. And so whether that's public safety, economic development, the nine points of my housing plan, all of these things is like the world's biggest Venn diagram that all connects to each other. And so I think anybody that comes in with just focus on one solution or in one way is gonna be missing out a lot, and they're not gonna be successful with anything that they try to do. So to answer your question, I would have to say, they're all connected. Please go to www.dayforchange.org. I am so tired of saying that. I cannot wait for two more weeks, and I'll never have to say that website again, but all of these issues are connected, and please check that out, and you can see how that happens.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Victor. How do you feel about Rochester's status as a sanctuary city? Are you in favor or not, and why? And do you think the city needs to strengthen its status by passing legislation?
Yes, thank you. That question is a very personal question. As a Mexican immigrant, I know firsthand the fears of getting pulled over, the fears of not knowing if your family member is gonna come home that night because of their immigration status. So I very much support the fact and appreciate the fact that we are a sanctuary city that protects those that are immigrants, that protect those that are coming here to try to build a better life. And I was very proud and appreciative that the city council passed a stronger legislation. And I had several conversations with many of the council members in support of that legislation because it was very personal, and I was able to express the benefits of strengthening our policy. So I definitely want to see that enforced, and I want to see others, other cities across the nation take on the lead that Rochester has put forward and strengthen their own policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, 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 I am totally in favor of us being a sanctuary city. In fact, I would like to see it be stronger, and not only stronger, I would like this to be a little bit more proactive. I have a platform plank that actually focuses on the city, putting in the city charter that not allows the city to spend taxpayer dollar on buying anything, goods or services from any corporation that promotes genocide. And that takes it way farther, and it kind of reminds me of what we did back in the 80s in terms of divestment with apartheid in South Africa. So not only do I want to protect the folks who are here, I want our city to use its resources to help make the world a better place, which also may help folks, not just the people here, but people whose families are in other countries as well. So the quick answer is yes, I'm totally in favor for it. Yes, I want to see it stronger, and I want to go beyond that as well.
Thank you. Kelly?
I am thrilled that we were able to pass stronger sanctuary city protections. I am also grateful that I was able to take part in drafting the legislation with a group of community members and council members to make it stronger. The only area I think we could possibly stand to add to it is to increase protections for people based upon their disability status. That's currently not in the legislation, and as we've seen with the Trump administration, stripping of protections for people with disabilities, rights that, you know, we've held sacrosanct for quite some time are on the chopping block, and we need to make sure that we hold our city leaders accountable to a line that we set and not that someone else tries to tear down. Yeah, so I'm proud that we're there, and I'm also proud and was happy to see that even at the situation on Westminster, when we had ICE agents who were trying to kidnap roof workers, that, you know, there were no city resources being used to support that federal action. So I think it's already working. I would love to see it stronger.
Thank you. This next question, Dave, we'll start with you. Food insecurity in Monroe County overall is 13%, but for Black and Latino residents, it's 28% and 30%, similar to the national trends. What can we in Monroe County do to address such racial inequities?
Fits in perfectly with what I was saying in terms of how things are intertwined and how they're interconnected. So as part of what I actually have been advocating for years, what I would like to see happen is the city to start using economic development dollars to take all of these empty parcels of land, well, not all of them, but a lot of them, and turn them into cooperatively-owned urban farms that would be owned and run by people in the neighborhoods. So what that does is produce food, makes it more available, it'll be cheaper if done well and with, with the proper support, it would be much more healthier and while creating economic development in these depressed neighborhoods. So I think that could be a win-win all along. These would also spur other businesses that would be using these foods, grocery stores, restaurants, anything, bakeries, anything like that. So something like that that has a, I dare, I'm gonna say trickle-up effect, that will really bolster our community in a number of ways, not just with food insecurity.
Thank you, Kelly.
Well, I believe that food justice is a core part of racial justice. I was just speaking with a constituent today. I was working on a project with them to help provide education around cover crops for urban gardeners, and we were talking about, you know, the process of acquiring city land to create those urban gardens, and what a fantastic opportunity it is, not only to create that foods amenity for a neighborhood, but to provide stability and strength. So when we are facing situations like we are in November with the potential for cuts to SNAP and food benefits, we can provide safety and security for our residents because we'll be growing our own food. We can make sure that, you know, our residents don't find themselves in desperate situations because if we provide food and access to food, access to even potentially community-owned grocery stores in their neighborhoods that they can get to by foot instead of having to cross over three or four bus lines to get it, we are making them safer, and we are taking that stress off of them and allowing them to be, have a more comforting and hopeful life because that's no longer a source of stress. It's a source of growth and development.
Thank you. Victor?
Yes, I completely agree with a lot of what has been said already, and like, land trusts play a big role in that. We're fortunate enough to have a land trust here that owns several community gardens that are being utilized by some of the neighbors that live around there, and expanding that is a great approach. But we also need to be able to have grocery stores in neighborhoods that currently don't have them and work, and that's where the city could play a big role in bringing some of the partners together, bringing, being able to identify some of the buildings that can be utilized for nonprofit grocery stores or co-op grocery stores, helping business owners and being able to start that up is crucial so that our neighbors are able to access those grocery stores. And a big issue with access also comes with transportation. Right now, our public transportation is not feasible for a single mom to be able to go to the grocery store and buy food for her kids, and fixing our public transportation so that we have that accessibility for the grocery stores that we are, that we do have in the area is another key part of being able to bring down some of those barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question, Kelly, you'll be answering first. The actions of the Trump administration endangered the welfare of many groups of people, both via budget cuts and incursions on constitutional rights. How should the city of Rochester respond?
I think just because the federal government lowers the bar doesn't mean we should have to trip over it. I think we know what is right. We know what is, we know how we want to be treated, and we should be treating our constituents and our community the same way. So we need to use every single tool we have at our disposal to make sure that the rights of our community are held, upheld, that people still have what they need, that they are not under threat from the federal government, and we've seen success already. The city successfully fought a, sued the federal government about the sanctuary city protections, and we were successful. Other municipalities are finding the same situation. When they don't back down and they stand up to this bullying, they're protecting their communities, and I think we need to just keep doing the same thing.
Thank you. Victor?
Yeah, so I, I don't think the city needs to go out looking for a fight, but I also don't think that it needs to back down and sacrifice any one of our neighbors in order to receive or appeal to the federal government. What the best response that we can have is figuring out what resources we're able to bring in together within our community, because we have the resources here, we have the knowledge, we have the abilities to sustain and support our neighbors and support our community within the city of Rochester. So the best approach would really be looking inward and figuring out what can we do to be able to be self-sustaining and make sure that everyone is able to thrive in our community. Doesn't mean that we are not gonna stand up when somebody is, you know, pushing back against us, but it also doesn't mean that we're, need to just fight and we're reliant solely on the federal government to be able to build a better community for Rochester because we could do that internally if we put our work together and come as a unified
Thank you.
Well, I know this might sound a little odd, but I look at this, what's happening right now at the federal government level as an opportunity. So a lot of folks who are upset, with good reason, are just doing what they can to have things go back to the way they were before Donald Trump. And I'm saying, the way they were before Donald Trump wasn't all that great for a lot of folks either. So this is an opportunity, so yes, if you want me to summarize in one word, fight, but let's fight for what we actually really want, a society that's even better than it was. So uphill battle? Oh, of course it is, but it was before. So if we're gonna get, look at how many people were in parks and stuff all over the place just yesterday and having their voices heard, then why don't we do that to create the society we really want as opposed to just going back to the way it was and still trying to scratch out a living or social justice or whatever? So I'm saying we should use this as an opportunity to really transform our community and our country to the way we really want it and the way we really need it and deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, this will be Victor. You will answer first on the next question. What is your stance on the current oversight mechanisms for the Rochester Police Department, such as the Police Accountability Board? Do you believe these mechanisms, mechanisms are effective?
Yeah, so I was a big proponent of the Police Accountability Board. I was out there door-knocking to get people, folks out to vote when the legislation was first passed. I've been very disheartened to see how much of its powers have been stripped away, and unfortunately, I don't see the Police Accountability Board being able to function the way that we intended it to, though I still believe that it has a role to play in being able to provide guidance and policy changes and full review. I do think that we need to think about a different approach, and city council has a role to play this as an over, as a governing body, and think about how can we incorporate some of our powers as a city, as city council to be able to provide more oversight into police force? If it's not the Police Accountability Board because it's been stripped down from what we intended it to do, there's still a role that could be played by city council to be able to bring some, afford some of those oversight powers and disciplinary powers. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dave?
Well, I think it's, if I remember my history right, I think it's pretty clear that both our current mayor and some current sitting members of city council weren't overly thrilled that we have a PAB right from the beginning, right? As soon as the issue came up. So my solution to this is, I don't know if it'll work with, with the current administration, but the next time there's contract negotiations with the police union, I think having them back down, and we need to make a hard stance on this, that this, that the Police Accountability Board's original powers, the things that over 70% of the voters voted for, get put back in, and that be in the contract with our PD. That's the only way they'll get, the PAB's gonna get its power back. And we can't rely on the courts, we see that already, and the Locus Club was working on fighting this from the second this election was over when we voted for the referendum, right? So this has to, we have to play hardball, and if we really believe, and look, I just mentioned today on WXXI, I've talked about it, it's difficult to get all the data, but I, I'm surmising, we pay over seven figures every year just from the lawsuits for police misconduct. We need to get a handle on this. This is important. You can look at it from social justice, fiscal responsibility, any way you want to look at this, we need to do this. We need to play hardball, and it should be in their contracts.
Thank you, Kelly.
I love how we're already in agreement on so many of these things. It'll make, you know, running our council so much easier. You know, as was said earlier, you know, the city council has the ability to, to make laws and to work with the administration to build policy, and I think we need to restore those disciplinary powers that we demanded. We need to provide access to records so that the PAB can do its job because the cost of those lawsuits is impacting how we can support our residents in general. If we are spending millions of dollars because there are people who are not following the rules and are hurting our citizens when they're supposed to be there providing help in emergency situations, this does not make us safer. This makes us weaker. So we need to make sure that we do whatever is possible during contract negotiations, during talks with the administration, that we restore those disciplinary powers and we give them access to those records so that they can hold our city workers accountable.
Thank you, Kelly. The next question, Dave, you'll be starting. The good cause eviction law was passed recently. What steps will you take to ensure its effective implementation, and how will you address potential challenges from landlords or legal obstacles?
This was about a week or two ago, I received a phone call from a landlord who said read either my website or he saw a video of mine or something, and he was pretty irate. He was not happy, and, and he was, and he insisted, well, I did, he left a message and I called him back, and we had this conversation for over a half an hour. And by the, by the end of the conversation, he, we, we were right on board with each other. I mean, I didn't convince him of anything, but when we were able, when I was, he was able to talk things through, I mean, he was like, and the Rochester Housing Authority should be doing this, and people should have housing, and we were in agreement with just about everything, and he didn't seem, he seemed to think that because this thing, good cause eviction, that there was no way he could evict a tenant who wasn't behaving properly, and that wasn't the case. So I think some more education... So I think some more education um, is, is necessary. Uh, but by the same token, my whole platform on this is housing is a human right, not owning rental property as a human right. Um, I've, I, I do have a mortgage now, I do have a house and, but I've been a renter for the majority of my life. And so I, I understand what people go through when you, you, how much, when you need like three times of, of the, the rent to be able to just to get in someplace. And it's not acceptable, it's not appropriate. And now I, I'm not gonna try to get into the history of capitalism here, but that has a lot to do with it. And sometimes we need to sit folks down and say, hey, look, you know, I get it. You wanna make money and you, you wanna, you know, a future for yourself and for your retirement. And that's what this gentleman was, was really worried about his retirement and I am too as a teacher. I'm worried about my retirement too, but that shouldn't be at the expense of people having a place to live. Thanks.
Thank you. Kelly?
Can you repeat the question for me?
Sure. The Good Cause Eviction Law was passed recently. What steps will you take to ensure its effective implementation? And how will you address potential challenges from landlords or legal obstacles?
Okay, um, so I believe when it comes to a lot of issues with uh, our renters, education for both our landlords and our renters is critical. Um, I would like to see uh, perhaps some school programming that teaches our young adults before they head out into the world, their rights and their responsibilities as renters or landlords. Um, I believe it's a way that we have a kind of captive audience that uh, the students would be able to not only support themselves once they get out in the world, but perhaps even support their parents at home to explain their rights and their responsibilities when issues invariably come up. Uh, I think Good Cause Eviction Protection has been fantastic. We have seen a decrease in the number of evictions. Um, we can't necessarily correlate the, the two together necessarily, we're working on that, some of that. Um, but I believe that uh, this was excellent legislation that protects the renters that have been uh, really impacted by uh, legislation that protects property more than people. Um, and I still think it provides a pathway for landlords to be able to um, evict people that aren't upholding their end of the bargain.
Thank you. And Victor, final comments?
Yes, uh, so I was a full supporter of the Good Cause Eviction uh, legislation that passed. I agree that education for both the renters and the landlords is, is a key component of this. I also believe that we need to have a proper um, staffing to be able to do uh, site visits, uh, be able to do code enforcement to make sure that the landlords are keeping up the property as intended. Uh, and being able to help with um, some of the uh, conflicts or litigation that happens, that occurs between the renter and um, the landlord. Unfortunately, part of the issue that we run into is uh, the judicial system. We just don't have enough uh, capacity to be able to hear all the cases that come forth uh, for, to court. Uh, so working uh, with our other members in government to be able to increase the capacity for the judicial to be able to hear more cases, having more uh, uh, judges uh, for housing court is going to be a critical piece of that. And unfortunately, it's not something that City Council can itself control. Uh, but using the, the power of our uh, relationships with other members of government and, and our, our seats at, at table being able to bring forth that, that policy and that change or advocate for it at least, um, will be another missing piece.
Thank you. Moving on to our next ca- question, we'll start with Kelly. Uh, many residents struggle to afford housing labeled as affordable. What initiatives would you support to create truly affordable housing options for low-income individuals and families?
So, this is one of our biggest challenges. Um, you know, there are some policy changes that we can make and there's also some uh, bigger issues that we need to tackle. Um, as far as policy changes, right now, when we are providing tax benefits to developers for creating more affordable housing, we are using uh, the area median income, which includes the entire county and not just the city median income. So people inside of Monroe County, if we have this bigger circle, are making more money than the average Rochesterian. So that kind of skews our numbers and really makes it more difficult to create affordable housing at a level that our city residents can currently afford. Now, the other piece of that is how do we encourage uh, our, and, and improve the income levels of our city residents? So that, I think we need to consider um, looking at raising the local minimum wage to be an actual living wage. Right now, we've got a city of sixty-three percent renters. The majority of our folks are um, living with, sorry, the cuckoo clock is going off. Um, our housing uh, man, that cuckoo got me. I apologize. The uh, our, are, are paying more than a third of their income on their housing, which doesn't leave uh, room for food in their budget. That doesn't leave room for uh, just activities of daily living. So we really need to look at ways to raise the wage for folks. Um, and make sure that that floor is at a spot that we can still maintain uh, housing that we can afford. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome, Victor?
Yeah, so unfortunately, there isn't one silver bullet to tackle, tackle this problem. Uh, we definitely need multiple solutions. One of them, I'll, I'll mention again is a community land trust model. Uh, a lot of the housing that we're providing in some of the programs like By the Block uh, are affordable uh, for this timeframe, but within fifteen years, they will no longer be affordable. So that subsidy goes away. By putting this house in a community land trust, it ta- it stays affordable for forever essentially. Uh, so having, investing our subsidies in our, in our funding and, and models like community land trusts to keep that housing affordable is one way. Uh, also being able to in, in intersect new models like co-ops. So having buildings where everybody could own a unit um, of their apartment building as opposed to just renting or having a developer that's uh, going to be renting out or converting it to luxury housing. Instead, maybe put, investing some other funds to be able to turn that into a co-op opportunity. So that folks can stay in their housing uh, is another model. Uh, and then lastly, when we're working with developers that are building new housing, having um, a community benefit agreement that's going to ensure that some of the units that they're building in this, this apartment complex are affordable and going back to Kelly's point to that specific A M I that is uh, specific to the city and not the county which is currently being used. Uh, but there's ways that we can dictate this work. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dave?
Okay, so this concept of A M I and city median income, I have been talking to City Council and various administrations, at least three of them, for years about this. And there is no excuse. They all know about it. And yet it, the county A M I still gets used af- with every single project. So they know about it and you'd have to ask people who are in there why they continue to do this. And, cause we still have housing issues now. But Kelly had a good point and brought up a, a number. I'm not good at remembering numbers, but that sixty-three percent of, of people who are renters, that's bringing that focus to having more people own where they live. Like Victor was talking about, having cooperative housing, having the um, Rochester Housing Authority stop privatizing their stock and creating cooperative housing. That's in my platform as well. As well as a whole bunch of other things, including using state law to take eminent domain, to take these zombie properties away from out-of-town negligent landlords and literally give them to these families who we say there's two thousand homeless kids in our C S D at any given day. We need to get, literally give them. And I have it all spelled out at, in my platform, so you can look at all the details, cause I only have a few seconds left. But really shifting the focus to putting these families in their own houses as opposed to finding more ways for them to be able to afford rent, I think would help the community as a whole.
Thank you, Dave. Next, this next question, we'll start with Victor. Neighborhoods affected by historical redlining still face investment disparities. What strategies would you implement to foster well-being in these areas?
That, that is a great question. Um, the first thing with, is having conversations with, with the community. Understanding deeply what is it that, that community is missing? What is it that it needs? Um, you know, I could come up with ideas like uh, grocery stores, pharmacies. Uh, we know that these deserts of uh, food deserts, pharmacy deserts, medical access deserts exist in the community. Uh, but without speaking to the residents and not really truly understanding what is it that they're missing from, from their community um, is critical. I truly believe in the um, five-minute cities. Uh, and if you're not familiar with that model, it means that everything that you need is within a five-minute walk of where you live. So where you uh, have your grocery store, your pharmacy, your medication, medical access, school, that's all within walking distance. I think that would break down a lot of the barriers. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, transportation is a huge barrier for access. Uh, so having that within walking distance is a, is a critical. But understanding that needs from the community is first of all, uh, the first step.
Thank you. Dave?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please? I wanna make sure I understood it right.
Sure. Neighborhoods affected by historical redlining still face investment disparities. What strategies would you implement to foster well-being in these areas?
Okay, well, so, some of, well, actually, we've all spoken about a lot of the things already that would do such a thing. But let me put this in a different perspective. So, when I did advocacy in the disability rights community, one of the things that I fought for was something called universal design. And a lot of times I had to deal with an individual structure or an individual project where everything about this project would be so that anybody with any kind of disability would have, would be equally accessible to them as well as anybody else who's in it. Whether it's an apartment building, an office building, a, a community center, whatever. So I'm thinking we need universal design for our communities. This five-minute walkability, absolutely. That, that word walkability was really big when um, when I was doing this advocacy as well. So if anybody who would need uh, that, what they would need to survive, to live in an area is within that area, then it's universal design. And I think that's something with the new zoning that we're talking about chain, making changes with our zoning and with our urban planning. Uh, needs to be so where everybody's included and everyone's needs in terms of how we start making changes to our community so that nobody is left out.
Thank you. This next question.
I don't think I got to answer this one.
Nope, you're next. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, so a, as Victor said, I think investment has to be guided by our residents and not imposed from the outside. Uh, redlining caused areas of our community to, certain areas to thrive at the expense of others. So if we wanna repair the harm of redlining, we need to have targeted rein- i- investment, not reinvestment, cause we never invested in them to begin with. Targeted investment in housing repairs and infrastructure and youth programs. Making sure people have access to capital, um, and making sure they have access to homeownership. And again, it has to be driven by the people that are living there, um, and not just, you know, decided upon by people behind closed doors. Um, I think the other thing that we need to do as well is to make sure that we avoid making the same mistakes again. Because sometimes policies just get a name change, um, and, but they still exist in other forms. So I, uh, one of the big things that I really wanna do is create a council office of racial equity that will examine every piece of legislation that comes across our desks before we vote on it. That will evaluate it as to whether or not it would improve or worsen racial equity in the city of Rochester. They've done it in Washington DC, they've done it in New Hampshire, I believe, and a couple of other places across the country. Um, and it's a way to prevent harm moving forward.
Thank you, Kelly. Dave, you'll be um, tasked with answering this next question first. What programs would you support to provide positive opportunities for young people in Rochester? And how would you secure funding for these initiatives?
Minute and a half, huh? Okay, I can do this. So I have been calling for years of increased funding and I'll get to the funding part in a second. Um, increased library hours, uh, library, uh, increased recreation center hours. Um, and I, I mean, I would start with that. I bring back, uh, there's been some folks who've been doing it kind of on their own or in, we, from organizations of their own. But when we used to have midnight basketball and now I'm really aging myself of, cause this was a really long time ago. But just programs like that, I would like to see happening again. Um, but yes, how are we gonna pay for all of it? So, um, again, my platform has stuff on what we can do for kids and how that would help in terms of economic development and public safety and all that. So let me talk really quickly about three ways that I have to pay for this and all my other stuff as well. So one, as I mentioned before, if we get a handle on the police department, so we're not paying seven figures a year uh, on lawsuits and settlements and things like that from police misconduct. I also want to stop all corporate welfare, which I've been advocating for, for decades now. Um, if folks are going to use our land and build things and make money uh, and use our streets and our sewers and our schools and things like that, they need to pay their fair share as well. And that would bring in more revenue also. And then I wanna explore what other cities have done and have a vacancy tax, whether it's landlords in terms of residential uh, uh, places or also even businesses and storefronts that have been vacant for a very long time because the rents are too high there. So there are three ways that we can be bringing in revenue um, to, to pay for those programs as well as the other stuff, including which I don't know if we'll get to, um, uh, the public utility that is the number one thing I've been advocating for. I had to slip it in, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Dave. Kelly?
Don't ever apologize for public power. Um, can you repeat the question again? I apologize.
Sure. What programs would you support to provide positive opportunities for young people in Rochester? And how would you secure funding for these initiatives?
You know, I think a lot of times people think of running a city like running a business, but I think we need to think about it as running a household. The key uh, thing that businesses do is they keep, you know, money flowing. Uh, the key thing a household does is it keeps people alive, it keeps them thriving. So we need to evaluate our budget and put our money where our needs and our wants are and our, we have to do better by our kids. We have to make sure that they have opportunities, not just for enrichment and um, connecting with one another, but also, you know, opportunities in uh, workforce exploration and finding their passion and finding what they wanna be when they grow up and helping them get there. Um, and making sure that they're finding their ways to good paying jobs. A lot of, we've got so many fantastic opportunities through our, our unions uh, with paid trainings. Um, so not everything has to be paid for by the city. There are other opportunities in the community that are there that are ready to help our youth. We just need to connect them to the opportunities that are there and support the groups that are making them happen.
Thank you, Kelly. And Victor, final?
Yeah, so um, it's been a while since I was uh, you know, it was in the K two, the twelve program. So I'm trying to think back to, to that time a little bit. And there's two things that uh, I feel really shaped me and my trajectory to where I am today. Uh, one of them is um, my high school had a program with a local university. We had students, uh, college students come in uh, and provide tutoring services or one-on-one services to students, especially those that were new immigrants and uh, English as a second language uh, like myself. Uh, and that really helped me kind of get through some of those classes where I, I was struggling a little bit and saw, helped me see some potential in myself uh, and to move forward. Um, the other was an after-school program that was specifically focused on math and science. One teacher happened to see that, that math was one of my strong suits, so kind of told me to go into this program. Um, and that's where I learned about engineering and what it meant to be an engineer and completely shifted my mindset into what was possible. And I think just giving those opportunities to students and children and being able to see what is possible for them. Uh, as Kelly mentioned, seeing, finding them, helping them to find their interests and their passions. Uh, and seeing themselves in another space and in a job because an engineer standing right in front of them uh, really goes a long way. And it's not really programs that I think cost a lot of money. It's just about using our partnerships a little bit more um, effectively in working with our local universities, working with our local engineering firms uh, to come in and set up some of those programs to students. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, Kelly, you'll be the first one for this next question. What initiatives would you support to enha- enhance educational opportunities in the city?
Oh, I am, I love learning. I think learning doesn't end when the school day ends. Learning is lifelong. And so I think we can create opportunities outside of our schools um, through our youth centers, our after-school programs, our libraries, uh, creative partnerships with nonprofits. I think everyone has the potential to be a teacher and share what they know. So if we can create opportunities for people to engage and uh provide community education to each other. Uh, just providing the venue sometimes is all we need. Uh, my mother-in-law i- is part of a knitting circle where she's helping to teach the next generation of knitters. So many of us have skills that are just, you know, being underused. So if we just have a space for people to come and share, uh, sometimes that's all we need. But I want to see, uh, also additional investments in literacy programs. I want to see investments in uh more community resources like uh the Southeast Area Coalition that has uh the tool shed, that people can come and borrow tools uh, and get some education programs on people to learn how to like repair their homes and take care of the things that they have to preserve that household wealth.
Thank you, Kelly. Victor?
Yeah, so um, I'll kind of mention again about strengthening our partnerships with universities that we have to be able to provide some of that uh, educational opportunity, but as Kelly mentioned, some of the nonprofits, even for profit companies um, that are able to come into the schools and um teach our children about what um educational opportunities are out there, what what path um, are available. Um, I also work for an organization that uses the arts as teaching mechanisms and um that teaches about the arts, uh, and having more partnership with organizations like that that can bring in artists that can help students learn um in a different way, uh, whether it be about math or science, but teaching them through the arts so that they could maybe grasp it. Um, and expand that those opportunities of education from uh just the the mainstream that we think about as an educational outlet uh, are important. So strengthening partnerships is a is a big piece of, um, what I think is important. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Dave?
Okay, as as an educator, um, I'll start by saying what both Kelly and Victor have said. I'm totally on board with. I mean, if you would not be for what either one of them have said, I would really just assume you hate children. That's I'll just go with really, seriously. But I, as someone who's currently in a program that that works with kids who aren't successful in various number of schools and that come to my program, um, there is no partnership, there is no, and we have a lot of kids in the city school district who there is no Mr. Science or crazy things above make volcanoes that blow up, that's going to pique their interest. They have no hope. And generational, and and I think that, well, I'm not saying we should ignore what you're talking about in terms of educational opportunities, what's just as if not more important is all of the other things that we've been talking about. These kids have no hope. I've taught in jails and they, I've had young people seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years old saying, telling me, I expect to be dead or in prison. So anything you have to say to me, I don't need this GED because I'm going to be dead or in prison. And that's where I'm focused. And again, I'm not saying anything that Kelly or Victor have said is incorrect or not worthwhile. Um, the things that I'm trying to do as a member of city council is focusing on those folks. And we need all of it. So, um, but when I started thinking about educational opportunities, that's where my mind goes, is let me get those kids that no matter what you put in front of them, they do not feel it's for them. And to do that, we need better, um, we need better housing, we need better food for them. We need all of those other things so that even if their families are in shambles right now, and that's going to take again, more than one solution here, and it's going to take years to fix all of these things that we've created ourselves. This doesn't happen just naturally. We need it all.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Victor, we'll start with you for this next question. What are your plans for promoting environmental sustainability and addressing the effects of climate change at the city level?
Great question. Uh, I'm really excited to answer this. Uh, I've done a lot of work in uh, environmental justice and climate change. Uh, I know that one of the biggest emitters of green- greenhouse gases in our region is transportation. Uh, so making sure that we have access to public transportation, which reduces the amounts of single-use cars that are on the streets is important. Uh, promoting the ability for walking and biking, which also reduces the amount of cars that are in the streets is important. Uh, but something that city could do is electrifying our fleets that we have available or using other renewable uh energy sources that are not uh, carbon emitting uh fleets, uh vehicles, um, as a way of reducing that. Um, also, when I think about climate change, I think about uh climate refugees that are coming to the area and what that's going to do to our infrastructure, whether it be our current, uh, again, transportation infrastructure. So more people come here, we'll have more cars on the streets, uh, but also our energy usage and our housing, which we've talked a lot about. So having a plan in place that's going to uh address all of those challenges and have the foresight for the challenges that are coming uh are important. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Dave?
Okay, so I gotta do a mini little history thing here real quick. So it was about fifteen years ago, give or take. Um, a green named Howie Hawkins ran for statewide office and his plank was, his platform centered on something called the Green New Deal. Now, this was the first time this term had come up, not the AOC version, which was stolen and watered down and turned into a resolution and went nowhere. Um, the original one, which was at the originally at the state level, and then Jill Stein on the Green Party line ran for president on this, on a national version of that. And I'm saying we can do this at a local level so that our economic development would be focused on um, creating jobs that also help mitigate climate change and makes our environment better. Kind of like my urban farm idea, right? Creates jobs, creates uh economic opportunity while improving soil, um, will create, will help air quality, et cetera. And also help mitigate uh some of the the um brownfields that we have as well. Um, I'd like to start looking at using instead of shipping away contaminated dirt, start using mycelium, AKA mushrooms, and having that be part of the city's plan. So I would, I would have a local Green New Deal program where we create jobs that focus on uh mitigating climate change. Thanks.
Thank you. And Kelly, final comment?
And then what was the, just reiterate the question again, please?
Sure. What are your plans for promoting environmental sustainability and addressing the effects of climate change at the city level?
So I think we'll have to work with the administration to implement a lot of these policies. And a lot of what we're going to have to do is take advantage of projects as they come up, so we can do things like making sure that uh we're thinking about water usage, uh, water drainage, um, thinking about the way that heat is reflected in our city and our city projects just by changing the color of our roofs, we can decrease the temperature of uh areas of the city. Um, we can do uh things that improve, reduce the need for buying more things. So like I mentioned earlier with SEEK, uh, having shared items and and building out our shared economy so that, uh, you know, we're not using a drill that sits on a shelf and is only used for eleven minutes over its lifetime. We can share the same drill because we only need it for eleven minutes. Um, and and most importantly, I think we should invest in projects like uh public utility. City council has the ability to allocate the funds for that study to transform our energy economy. Uh, so we can invest five dollars per person in our city and improve not just the environmental outcome for our city, but improve uh, or increase the amount of money that stays in their wallet and stays here in Rochester by investing in public power.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, okay, Dave, you'll be addressing the next question. How should we address the mental health needs of Rochester residents? Particularly in underserved communities?
So again, back to the very beginning of of our time together, uh, saying how all of these things are interconnected. So dealing with housing and dealing with food and dealing how we use our land and how we treat our children and are important. And doing that will help this on a long-term basis, but immediately we have some issues and we need to seriously expand, um, such groups that we already do some funding, Pathways for Peace, uh, our PIC team. Um, we, we really need to increase funding for that. And so how do we pay for such things? I was asked this today. Do I want to totally defund the police? I was asked that today on the radio. And I said, no, if you're just going to take away money and not do anything with it, then I don't think it's worthwhile. But if you're going to take money from the police to go towards mental health services and crisis intervention for people who really need it, yeah, I'm down with that. I have no problem with that. In fact, it's a better use of our time than asking police people with guns who aren't trained to deal with mental health crisis to deal with mental health crisis. So I would, we could totally put more funding into blowing up what we have that works. I shouldn't say blow up, expanding it, for what works than opposed to just trying to do with what we have. We, uh, and and a lot of these mental health issues we have has to do with capitalism, systemic racism and the structural stuff that we've had, not just in Rochester, but in this country or in the Western world for centuries. And that's actually what we're fighting. And it's not going to be done overnight. It's not going to be done with, uh, using Victor's terminology, that silver bullet. Um, it's going to take a lot of work and we're going to need to reallocate funds that we use for one thing, it's more punishment oriented to more mental health stability and things that people actually need. They cause mental health crisis as well.
Thank you, Dave. Kelly?
Uh, I believe that mental health is social health. Um, people's basic needs are not being met, and we're seeing the result of that in in our community where people are having, you know, they're dealing with substance use disorder, they're finding ways to fill, um, that lack of connection and that that need somewhere that's not the healthiest way for them to to do. So I think we need to, um, you know, address our basic needs. Um, and we need to help give our kids and even our adults the tools that they need to help them communicate um, and connect with one another. And that doesn't just have to be through therapy, that can be through the arts, that can be through music, that can be through community connection, uh, like we playing a a game of touch football. It's just a a reason for us to do something besides work our noses to the grindstone. We're here to live and enjoy one another. And I think if we have more opportunities to do so, our mental health across the community will improve. Um, you know, the county is primarily responsible for delivering mental health services. We need to use our positions on city council to advocate for more mental health services and expanding our crisis intervention services.
Thank you, Kelly. Victor?
Yes, um, I completely agree with what has already been said, increasing access, whether it be through um, again, going back to transportation, making sure that folks are able to get to where, uh, the services that are available and what they need, but we also know that we are have a lack of mental health service providers. Um, and that's not something that's going to go away. Uh, so being able to work with uh local, local universities to be able to increase the the pipeline for some of those service providers is is critical, um, using some of the technology like uh telehealth, uh, so that folks are able to access and not rely on transportation. Uh, but also, again, uh, I'll echo what Kelly says, that there's other avenues for being able to um, find therapy in ways that are beyond talk therapy with a therapist, uh, whether it be arts recreation, just being out in nature uh, and providing those access points for folks, um, is important. But I will agree with what uh Dave was saying that if we're not addressing folks' basic needs, uh, we're not going to be able to tackle the mental health crisis that we are seeing, that addressing those basic needs is critical to be able to uh help people's mental, mental stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Kelly, do you support Daniel's Law? Why or why not?
Uh, I do support Daniel's Law, and I'm happy to see that it's making its way through the the state. There, I remember speaking on Daniel's Law when it was first proposed and mentioning how critical it is that when we show up late, we show up with humility and with care. We were late in meeting Daniel Prude's needs. Um, and we lost him. So many times we are intervening at the point of crisis where it is uh difficult, sometimes it's dangerous and sometimes it's deadly. We need to be investing way further upstream and making sure that people have the mental health care supports that they need and making sure that they are being met where they are with support and not uh with inappropriate response. So I am in support of Daniel's Law.
Thank you, Victor.
Yes, um, I fully support Daniel's Law. Um, we saw what happened um, when we had, don't have the appropriate response to a crisis. Uh, but we've also seen the improvements that have been made by implementing uh systems like the PIC team. And I want to see those systems expanded. Uh, and I believe that it's a good model to be implemented across uh, across the state. Uh, so I'm excited to see it gets some momentum. Um, and I want to make sure that we not only adhere to uh Daniel Prude's law here, but also expand on the services that we're able to provide by expanding the PIC team, expanding the way that we respond to uh some of the crises that we see, uh, and having some of the those calls not just be responded to by police, because we know not every call requires police and uh and law enforcement to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave?
This will be quick. Yes.
And why?
I, I'm actually disappointed it's taking this long. Um, it's obvious, not ju- I know it's called Daniel's Law, and I know why it's called down Daniel's Law, but it's really sad that we needed something like that to happen for it to be thought about. Right? That 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 seemed to be a priority or somewhat of a priority. That look, it's, it's that old cliche, you could pay me now or pay me later. And usually when we're paying later, it costs someone their lives and it ends up costing us a lot more money. So, yeah, there's things need to be done. We need to invest in people way earlier than than crisis intervention.
Thank you. Okay, Victor, that you'll be answering this next question first. Do you support the proposal to transition RG and E into a public utility? What are the potential benefits or drawbacks you foresee and how would you address them?
Yes, I do fully support. Um, I fully support the study. I, I want to see what the study is going to show. Um, I do think that it's going to show that we are going to benefit from transitioning to a public utility, and I would be fully supportive of that. Uh, we've seen some, a lot of the issues, uh, myself included, uh, a lot of the high energy bills. Uh, the inconsistency in my billing, even though it's supposed to be on budget billing, you know, one, one week it's uh, one, one month is uh two hundred dollars and next month is seven hundred dollars, and I have no idea why, when my usage has not changed at all. Um, so by having a public utility in place, uh, it's a nonprofit. It's a, the sole purpose is to be able to provide that energy to the residents of Rochester. So there's no need to increase the rate higher than it needs to be to keep the um, infrastructure intact with maintenance and repairs. Um, one of the hindrances that I see is uh being able to uh, have the proper system in place to be able to do any repairs of the infrastructure. Without that study, it's hard to really know uh, any of the uh defer maintenance that exists within the infrastructure, how much it's going to cost to kind of uh bring it back to a a good quality. Um, so those are all things that a study would show us, and that would be the first step, is making sure that we get that study to show us any insufficiencies that we may have in the system. Uh, as an engineer, I deal with infrastructure very often, uh, so it would give me firsthand experience to be able to read a study like that and be able to make some recommendations. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dave?
Well, it's on all my lawn signs. So yes, I am totally in favor. It's on my lid. Uh, it's totally, I'm totally in favor of replacing RGNE with a public utility. Um, I have promised that one of the first things I will do when elected is to put forth the legislation to I have promised that one of the first things I will do when elected is to put forth the legislation to release the money to start the study. And I think the biggest, there's two things that I think will be the biggest thing cautionary parts to it. One is, so the state law says we do the study, we do the referendum. It's going to be very close to unanimous, I would think, in terms of whether we want to get rid of our genie. And, but then we have to negotiate with our genie to get their stuff and how much that's going to cost. And I think that's going to be the problem because they're not going to go easily. They're not going to want to give up their stuff, no matter how much money we're saying we'll give them. We are a cash cow for them. They take our money and they ask the state for more every year and they're not going to go lightly. They're not going to go easily. So that I think is going to be the number one thing. And then what Victor alluded to is we're getting old stuff. And we're going to have to have a plan within that to, we're going to our genie is not taking care of the infrastructure and we're going to have to come in and do that, which actually we need to, because they're not going to do it and there's going to be a bigger catastrophe happening. And then we're all going to be in trouble in terms of our energy needs. So not only is this cool in terms of our bills, but this is going to help us avoid any catastrophes.
Thank you, Dave. Kelly?
And I am also 100% in support of the transition to a locally owned utility. And the first step of that is, of course, through the study that needs to happen. You know, every year, millions upon millions of dollars are leaving our pockets and going into the pockets of investors. Many of them don't even live in the United States. Ibadrola is based in Spain. Those dollars could stay here and those dollars could be reinvested in our community in upgrading that infrastructure, in making us transition to a green power. And we can have that, we just need to choose to do it. There are a lot of people involved who are influential, power brokers, so to speak, in the city of Rochester, who have been putting their thumb on this legislation forever, trying to keep it from passing. I think it's time, it's well past time to take the first step, do the study. We spend way more money on far less. We can do this, we just have to choose to.
Now, just for clarification for the viewers, when you talk about doing the study and each one of you can answer this question, is this a study that needs to be done at the city level or at the county level or at both levels? And Kelly, I'll just start with you.
Yeah, I think there are different ways to approach it. I personally think that if the county is going to drag their feet on this, the city can take the lead. And in the process of that study, if it looks like the entire county can benefit from a transition, you know, we put in some money upfront and we invested in it. If the rest of the county sees that it's an investment worth fighting for, they can chip in more. Or it could be that it turns out in our study that, you know, the city can do it on their own. I think that's the reason for the study is to find out what our options are so that we can take those first steps.
Thank you. Victor?
Yeah, I think from an infrastructure standpoint, it would be, it would make a lot more sense for the county to come in as a whole. However, if the county is not willing to step up and be part of the, of the work, the city can do it on its own. And I believe it should if the county is not going to step in. There is ways, and as Kelly was saying, there's ways to break down the study to be able to identify the cost of the city doing it on its own versus the county kind of coming in as well. There will be some hardship in just from an infrastructure standpoint about how we break things up, but that is all going to come forth in the study. So it will be better, in my opinion, for the county to come in. However, if they're not going to step up, the city can do it on its own and should.
Thank you. Dave?
I am totally focused on the city only and what Victor says I'm not disagreeing with, but politically, I just, they've already shown their hand. The county, or at least Adam Bellow has shown, and as well as, I believe the county legislator from Fairport, who has their own electric company and has said, no, don't do this. So yeah, I, city only and the county wants to come on board down the road, that's fine. Or if the towns want to do it, like Fairport and Spencerport, want to do it on their own, then we can bring them on board, that's fine. But no, I think for right now, the feasibility study and we should go city.
Thank you. This next question will start with Dave. What changes and additions would you propose and advocate for to ensure that community voices are heard and incorporated into city council decisions?
One of the things that Victor alluded to before, a community benefit agreement, I think that should be kind of the law of the land in terms of any kind of projects that are done, even, even just city projects that the city government's doing. I, we have, our city government does a lot of things where they get people's feedback. And then it's as if they really weren't paying attention to the feedback. So I would like to have some kind of mechanism where, look, sometimes I've talked to them, just in this campaign alone, I've talked to members of the city, like residents of the city who have some very unique and potentially illegal ideas of things that they would like to have, see in the city. So not every idea is going to be a good one, but you could say the same thing for all the members of city council or in the administration. So I do want to see ways where folks have more say in how our money is spent. We tried once when I think our map he got a grant and we did participatory budgeting. And I would like to see that be something that we do every year, that a part of the budget is set aside for the community to have meetings and actually vote. They did ranked choice voting on various ideas on what to do with money. And I want serious stuff, not just like money for planners, like in neighborhoods, which I'm not dissing, I'm a green, I'm pro plant. But, you know, I'd like to see this participatory budgeting happen on real, like hefty things on how we spend our money. So that would be the number one way I would say have people's voices get involved more is actually have some say in terms of how their money is spent.
Thank you, Kelly.
You know, like Dave mentioned, I think too often a decision is made and then community engagement is a checkbox to tick off. It's not really the foundation of where projects are coming from. You know, it's one thing to say, oh, we're building a bridge. Do you want it to be green or blue? Did we want the bridge in the first place? So I think a lot of our planning decisions have to start in our neighborhoods instead of being put upon them afterwards. I would like to see our city council members, I would like to have office hours at the public market and other public places so that that way, when community needs are coming up or there's questions that are coming up, we are far more accessible to the community at large. So I think there are ways and we should absolutely be recording and documenting speak to council sessions. Right now, I helped to organize the recording and archiving of those through DSA for the last year and a half since the Business Improvement District fight. And that is a remarkable record of the challenges that we have faced in the city and that we have come to over and over. So that is another piece that needs to happen.
Thank you, Kelly. Victor?
Yes, I agree with what both Kelly and Dave have said already. And the only thing that I would add to that is being able to take counsel to the residents. So we have, you know, speak to council right now, which really isn't interaction, a way to be interactive with council. It's really just council listening to what residents have to say. But having town halls in the different quadrants across the city, where we really could have a conversation with the residents of that quadrant or of that area would be, make council a lot more accessible for residents and really being able to have conversations and come up with solutions together. So that's the only other piece I would add. Thank you.
You're welcome. And this will be our final question before we do our closing remarks. And I'll start with Kelly. What measures do you support to improve and secure elections and voting in our country?
Oh, wow. There's so many things that we could do. One, we have to socially treat every election like it is critical. We, this idea that in Rochester, the election is over in June because we have a majority Democrat registered voters is false. It's a false narrative that keeps getting spun every year. Because we may have 65,000 registered Democrats, but only 13,000 or so folks showed up to vote. So clearly, we need to engage our residents, not just every four years when there's a presidential election, but every year. And make sure that they know how to engage with their city government and their elected officials, not just when they need something. I mean, not when the elected official needs something like their vote. I want to see ranked choice voting. I want to see more districted council seats. I want to see more civic education on how how government works. I think we just need to think good government or government is like a toupee, like you only notice it when it's bad. And we really need to focus on making sure that people are paying attention, they are holding us accountable and they are engaged in the process because we got to use it or we're going to lose it.
Thank you, Kelly. Victor?
Yes, I completely agree with what Kelly said. And again, I really appreciate you holding this forum because it is important that we try to engage and educate voters, no matter the year. And every election matters. And I think especially, especially local elections matter. So having that civic engagement year round, not just during election time, not just when it's a presidential federal election, but constantly ongoing, having that engagement and education is very important and critical. And also, again, going back to my idea about taking city council to the quadrants and to residents, educating, you know, what is the budget? What does the budget mean? How do you read the budget? You know, I think taking that educational opportunities to the residents so they could understand the actual functions of government are critical and it's, you know, something that I would look forward to expanding on if elected to city council. Thank you.
Dave?
Okay, so I started down as you were talking, because you were asking about the nationally. And so one of the issues is that our voting system is very disjointed. It goes state by state, has different laws. And then even within the state, every county has their own little way of have putting their own stamp on it. So if there's a way we can standardize how we do that. Now, if we do that, then we need all of our voting machines to be the same using open source voting, assuming it's electronic. And the machines need to be provided by a company that doesn't, doesn't give political contributions, that isn't tied to any political party. Along with ranked choice voting, I'd also like to see proportional representation at every level of government. I think those things would further democratize, small d, our election, our voting system. I'm going to talk a little bit more about politics in my closing statement, so I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay. And that leads us into our closing statements and we will start with Victor. And each one of you will have two minutes to give us your closing statements.
Great, thank you. And thank you again for everybody that joined us and for hosting this forum. Again, my name is Victor Sanchez. I am a candidate for Rochester City Council. You can find out more about me on vot victorsanchez.com. There you could find more about my history and my platform. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I believe in the American dream. I believe Rochester is properly set up to help everyone thrive and achieve that American dream if we have the right people in place to put forward proper structures, proper systems and give everybody that opportunity. I've done a lot of work in the community and several nonprofits, community organizations that give me a range of the issues that our community is facing as well as serving on the city's preservation force. So I engage with city government already. I have helped set forward policy like Vision Zero, as well as working on projects like Peace Village. So I know the interactions that are needed to work with city government. And I know the issues that are facing our community. I am ready to take on the seat. And I know once, if elected, I will hit the ground running. So I hope to own your support. And I look forward to engaging more with voters and residents in the next couple of weeks that we have left in this election. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Victor. Dave?
I use some of my time here to talk about politics because it's important. Kelly's alluded to this twice and talking about how so many folks have just assumed, I'm talking to people who vote in every November and they're saying, didn't we just have an election? Like people who vote every November still seem to think that June was the election. And it's fascinating to talk to folks who have this mindset, right? And, and there's, look, the people who are in power, who deal, who handle the structure have no incentive to change the way things are done. Because if it gets changed, they lose some power. So it's going to be up to us. And the people who are in power continue to chip away at that. I can tell you as a green, we used to have ballot status and now we don't because thanks to the ruling party in New York State, they triple the requirements to be a party in New York State, right? And so in order for us to make the changes that we want, folks are going to have to ignore the what's considered conventional wisdom. And again, why I'm so grateful for this opportunity for us to get together, look who's not here. Look at the candidates who are not here, the ones who have the Democratic line, right? That says something. It does. And that, and I'm not saying any of them are good people or bad people, just, but it says something about the structure that we have here in terms of voting. So I'm Dave Sotlafadis. I'm running for one of the five seats in Rochester City Council. I told a long time, this is his term, his description of himself, a longtime Democratic operative the other day, who just says he can't see himself voting for anybody but a Democrat, even though he thinks everybody on city council is bad. This is what he said. So I said, well, hey, you get to vote for five people. You vote for me and for Democrats, still 80%. I think that's passing. So look, if you want the system to change, don't vote for me just because I'm not a Democrat. Don't vote for me because I'm a green and maybe you lean that way. Look at the things that I'm trying to do. My platform is at my website, www.daverchange.org. All my social media handles are day for change. I'm putting things up there almost every day. You can see the things that I'm trying to do and the things that I've done and the things that I've worked on. And don't vote or not vote for me because of the party I'm on. Vote for me because of the things I'm trying to do and where I'm coming from. And I promise you that I know it's cliche now, but if I'm on city council and in one of the at-large seats and I agree with Kelly that we should have, we should get rid of the at-large into districts, but I will represent everybody, no matter what party. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
So I just want to underscore how important this election is for folks to come out and vote, not just to vote for me, although that would be nice. We have several judicial seats that are up and our blue city voters, sorry, Dave, need to get out there and make sure that they are voting for judges that are going to uphold their interests. If we stay home, we've seen what happens and how crucial those judges are to maintaining our constitution and maintaining our rights. So that's just my little plug there to make sure you get out and vote anyway. But I have seen what happens when communities come together to demand something better. Whether it's fighting to stop a corporate takeover of downtown with our fight against the bid or pushing for tenant protections and pushing for public power, real change starts with organized people who believe that something better is possible. And democracy only works when we do. So your participation tonight shows that you're paying attention and you're ready to take action. So like I said before, I'm Kelly Cheadle. I'm an artist, I'm a small business owner, an organizer and the legislative aide for City Council's East District. I'm running because I believe that leadership should be rooted in care, creativity and accountability to the people. Our job as public officials isn't to make all the decisions behind closed doors, it's to be an extension cord for you to plug the power of the public into the machinery of government and help make it work for all of us. That means fighting for a living wage so that people can afford to live in the communities that they serve. It means that we make sure that our housing is safe, affordable and stable. It means listening, showing up and staying connected to the neighborhoods that we represent. It means listening, showing up and staying connected to the neighborhoods that we represent, not just during election season, but every single day. You can learn more about my campaign and about me at voteforkelly.com. So if you believe in leadership that listens and leads with the people, I ask for your vote for Kelly Cheadle on the Working Families Party Line this November 4th. Let's keep building a Rochester that works for all of us together. Thank you.
Thank you again to each one of the candidates who are running again for the Rochester City Council. This will conclude our debate. At this time, I'm going to ask that the greeter will turn on their camera and all others will turn their cameras off. Thank you.
Thank you once again for joining us tonight. The debate has been recorded and it will be uploaded to the League's YouTube channel within a day or so. We will email a link of the recording to all those who registered for the debate. We encourage everyone to share the link widely so that other voters will have a chance to learn about the candidates. We have other debates scheduled and for a complete list, please visit our website, l w v dash r m a dot org. Thank you so much.